Delay, it is past the 10 o'clock hour. It is July 12th, 2022. The Board of Supervisors, the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all their special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you please poll or take the roll, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Present.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Supervisor Mastin?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
Here. Now, we will please take a moment of reflection. And now, if you'll all please stand, Supervisor Mastin will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Introduction of new employees. Do we have some?
Yes, Chair Supervisor, we do have a couple today.
Right on.
Good morning, Board.
Hi, Tom.
I'd like to introduce you to the new Office Technician for Administration, Lauren Kramer.
Oh.
Lauren will be helping out in HR risk management as well as helping building maintenance with parks as well.
Right on, welcome, Lauren.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like just one today, the second one is not here.
Oh, okay. Right on. Just as a note, we are going to return to closed session after this meeting, and County Council, we have nothing to report from closed session to this point.
There is nothing to report, however, the new employee did just show up, and I can introduce him.
Okay.
This is Edwin. If you want to come to the podium, introduce yourself. We just hired him as the local guy, and we were surprised to find him lurking about.
Right on, welcome.
Welcome.
What is he doing? What does he lurk for?
Yeah, what are you lurking?
He's our new Deputy County Counsel.
Oh, nice.
Right on.
Hello, everyone, my name's Edwin Aguilar, Mayor Montes. Like Joel said, I'm new Deputy County Counsel here, and it's my third day at work. Just wanted to introduce myself, say a little bit about myself, just so you guys know who I am, and later we can get to know each other a little more. I was born here in Crescent City, grew up in Smith River, went to Smith River School, K through eight, and went to Del Norte High. My parents immigrated here from Mexico, so I'm a Spanish speaker as well, bilingual. My dad works in Smith River, he's managed a dairy farm out there for about 35 years. My mom works at Pacific Wood Laminates in Brookings, she's been there as well for like 25 years. Both hardworking parents, really proud of them, and yeah, I'm proud to be working here in my home county. I'm excited to help out and work as hard as I can to help everyone out and do my assignments to the best of my ability, so.
I'm sure they're proud of you too, and welcome.
Yeah, I think so.
And thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's cool, that's good news.
Good job, Joel.
Right on.
Lurking about.
Okay, no actions from closed session to this point. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting. We do have one item, an urgency item, to appoint the County Administrator, Neil Lopez, as the interim Director of Child Support Services per County Code Section 2.10.30.U effective immediately, and until such time as a permanent Director of Child Support Services is selected and appointed by the Board as requested by the C A O.
Move to approve this item as an urgency item and add that to the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then Kylie, would you please poll a vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Also, we're pulling item number six from the consent agenda and bringing it back at a later date. Proper backup was not attached, so we will be pulling that item. And I think that's it for right at the moment. We are going to move on to receive brief reports from supervisors, what they've been doing the last couple of weeks, and we're going to start with Supervisor Mastin.
Okay, so, do you want to let everyone know that I am planning a town hall meeting, July 15th, with law enforcement and Sheriff Scott at 5:00 in the Birch Track area? I have had several complaints from constituents regarding law enforcement issues with the Ruth Homeless Camp, and also in my past town hall meetings, law enforcement in Birch Track was listed as a number one item of concern, and so as a follow-up, that is the reason that I've scheduled for the follow-up meeting in that area with the sheriff. So, I have had some constituents from Clamath regarding some additional traffic in the Redwood area concerning their concern that there's a grow there, and they're just sort of wondering if there is a permit for that grow, and that they just are concerned and want some follow-through in that particular area regarding that matter. Watched the state Little League games in Medford, and the girls took third, and it was exciting to watch them participate in, at that level, in the Little League series. Attended the, arranged for the discussions for the first enhancing tourism and economic development in Del Norte County, was well-attended with over 30 people, including city, county, with Supervisor Short in attendance, and national and state parks, school districts, C R, and just discussions regarding what's currently happening in Del Norte County and what each entity has scheduled for happening in Del Norte County. And the second meeting is scheduled for today at 3:30 at the Cultural Center. So, just to continue those discussions, there will also be a celebration where we're going to be celebrating the first phase of the beachfront development, and they will be unraveling the second phase of the beachfront project. And so, that's a wonderful opportunity for us to take a look and actually celebrate what's happening here in our county. Senator McGuire will be providing the update tonight, and Chairman Hemmingson and myself will be participating in that town hall on the last chance grade for the update and as to what's happening there, and looking forward to participating in that. That'll be at 6:30. I will not be at the next board meeting, I have a national women's conference that I'm the founder and the president of in Rhode Island, so in Connecticut, rather, and so I will not be here for the next board meeting. But that concludes my report.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I did attend a Community Economic Resilience Fund meeting, that is a SURF meeting. It is a new program, they have identified regions throughout California that they're going to try and promote some economic development, and that meeting led to another meeting, which is leading to another meeting today, this afternoon. However, if any other board member is also pursuing this funding or wants a seat at that table, I certainly can step aside. I don't think we all need to be there, but I do definitely want to make sure Del Norte's voice is heard, and if there is funding available, I want us represented. So, and I don't know if perhaps we need to appoint somebody to this or not, so I'll kind of leave that lingering out there. I attended all the 4th of July festivities, the very best part of the 4th of July parade was seeing Sheriff Scott and Chief Griffin lead off the parade together, and I show that, I believe that really shows a strength, that our two agencies are coming together and working together for the best protection of this community. The parade was a success, the deck party was a success, the fireworks were not just completely pink fog, so that was a success, and so all in all, we had a great 4th of July festivities. Of course, when you go out in public, you speak with a lot of constituents, and those constituents gives you a very strong list of things to do. So, I do have a long list of things to do now that I'll be working on, and that includes addressing some issues in District Two with regard to RVs being parked on the street for lengthy periods of time, a homeless encampment that continues to be on Pebble Beach, installing sprinklers in their front lawn and later being red-tagged, looking into some of that, and then also a street sign. And none of these things can be done without our various departments through the county. And so, as always, I try and just recognize that these aren't things that, you know, the Board does, these are things that our departments are doing. And so, big shout-out in this particular thing, because all these involve C D D, they're just, they're the umbrella for the Roads Department, Engineering, and Code Enforcement, so I do appreciate your department. To that end, I listened in on a planning commission meeting. I attended an informal meeting with Sheriff Scott, Well Path, Lieutenant Stephen, and Behavioral Health regarding medicated assistant treatment. You know, based on the opioid epidemic, we have to look at new ways in which we help people come off of these very potent drugs. And so, medicated assistant treatment is one of those newer things that we have been trying, and so I just want to continue those conversations to see if we can't make those available to inmates in the county jail. I met with Justin Riggs, who's the Director at Animal Control, the Ag Department. He has a couple items on the agenda today, so I really wanted to kind of flesh out his ideas and opinions about those ideas to make sure that we're taking into account his perspective on the potential changes. To that end, I also had a very long discussion with Sheriff Scott, who also has a couple items on the agenda today. I really wanted to just make sure I got complete clarification, because they are on the consent agenda, but I like to make sure I do completely all my research for that. I had lots of calls, obviously, from constituents, but one that's really compelling to me, and it's very frustrating, is mental health treatment. And these individuals who are not doing something to commit a crime, or if they do commit a crime, they're being released very soon, but they're so mentally ill, they cannot participate in their own treatment. And so, what can we do, you know, as a community? And there are things that were in place, like Laura's Law, that you can force treatment upon people, but that's not something that we opted for here in Del Norte County, and to be frank, it's not something that was widely utilized in the state of California. So, you know, keep calling me, keep pushing me, that's what I'm here for, and we've got to find a solution. We're going to keep working on this to try and see if we can not provide better mental health services to the people that are severely mentally ill, that are not wanting to participate in their treatment, they don't want to take their medication. So, what can we do? How can we, I don't want to say coerce them, but help them make that decision, because they'll be better for it. I did speak yesterday with C D D regarding installing some streetlights at the intersection of Inno and Washington Boulevard, and that's just not as easy as you would think, just slap up a light and let's go with our day, there's a lot of processes for that. So, I'll be bringing that before the Board soon to see if we can't make that a safer corridor there. And then, as Supervisor Mastin indicated, Beachfront Park, I had an interview with Greenworks yesterday, and they're just excited about the progress that they're making on the design for Beachfront Park, and they just wanted some of our local input on that as well. And that is my report.
Thank you. Vice Chair Short?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Supervisor Mastin said, we attended her Tourism and Economic Development event. I had a linky discussion with a gentleman from the Arcata Economic Development Corporation, and it makes me hopeful about the grant writer position that Measure R is funding when that position gets filled. There's many organizations that are out there with philanthropic aims that we could utilize here in Del Norte County, we just need to get that grant writer to work. So, hopefully that will open up some opportunities that aren't immediately seen, so. I was included on email, I believe all of us were, that was sent to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife from Jeff Reed on behalf of the Del Norte Waterfowlers, and I just wanted to offer him my thanks for keeping us in the loop. I'm not personally a waterfowler, but I appreciate their insight and their involvement in keeping us apprised of what is happening out at Lake Earl, Lake Talwa, and what the California Department of Fish and Wildlife is doing out there. Attended the first Friday event, another successful event that the Divas put on, lots of people down there, really happy to see that. I helped set up for the deck party, my cousin, Luanne Epperson, asked me to help, and that, those kind of chores are fun for me, and I really enjoyed the people there that were helping out, and I wanted to give a special thanks to Supervisor Starkey for heading up the 4th of July effort. It is really apparent that a lot of work goes into that whole effort. It is not just simply putting on a deck party that's coordinating all the 4th of July events, and it's a lot of hard work, and I just wanted to thank her publicly for that, because it really, really went well. Lots of people in town, it was a beautiful day, had the waterball event downtown, I got to play waterball this year, so.
You got to win waterball.
Yes, yeah, yes, I did. But, yes, it was a lot of fun, and on the tail end of the 4th of July activities, I wanted to give kudos to the city of Crescent City. My dad commented to me on the morning of July 5th, and he said, Darren, have you seen Beachfront Park? And I was like, no, is it bad? And he goes, no, it's beautiful, and then sure enough, went down the street to take a look, there was no evidence that there was a huge party down there, and the city really, really outdid themselves. And I know that there's another group of people that does a beach cleanup event as well, and just the city looked beautiful after the event was over, and I just really wanted to say thank you to the city for putting out that extra effort. I attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting along with Supervisor Howard, we attended an interview with a contractor who's working toward beachfront park improvements and design. I attended a Del Norte Solid Waste Management Agenda Review yesterday, and as far as county business, that's all I had. But I did want to ask you, Mr. Chairman, upon consensus of the Board, if we could formulate or create some kind of recognition for our outgoing, Aaron Goodwin, our Veteran Services Officer and our Child Support Services Director. He tendered his resignation, and I was just hoping to recognize the five years of good service that he spent with the county. And that is it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make this brief, as Supervisor Short and Starkey mentioned, did have an interview for the city's beautification and future plans for Beachfront Park, and addressing quite a few constituent concerns around 4th of July, and in addition, some complaints on Lesnar Road concerning a farming operation, and then also a neighbor-on-neighbor type battle that continues on Ocean View Drive. And as Supervisor Starkey mentioned, and I think it's, I think it goes without saying that us as board members are strongly supported by our staff, and in particular, Community Development Department has been excellent in this process over the years. We rely on our code enforcement offers greatly, we rely on our building and planning inspection officers greatly, and just want to say, big shout-out today for the amount of support they give us to address the issues of constituent concerns in the community. And also, one of the biggest things I'm doing right now is interviewing for an Economic Development position, that will be staffed here in this community by the U C Cooperative Extension Service. This is a position that was afforded to our community through an increase in the U C Cooperative Extensions Budget by the state legislature, and Glenda Hummingson, who's the current Director of the Services for the state of California, has seen it fit to position that economic development person here in Del Norte County, and I think it's well-deserved. They'll serve both Del Norte, Humboldt, and Trinity Counties, but be positioned here. So, looking forward to having three more of the five interviews that we're doing, and maybe having by August, somebody put in place here in Del Norte County. And with that, that's the conclusion of my discussion.
Thank you, Supervisor. Well, I had a few things going on as well, had several emails and phone calls, constituents' issues, kind of fielded those. I also had a Dungeon and Scrab Task Force meeting where we did more or less a postseason assessment, and those things will go on until we get ready just before the next season starts. Did celebrate anniversary with my wife, 49 years, so pretty happy that we made it this far. Hopefully, we'll make it to 50, we'll have to see on that. I did attend the deck party, you know, great turnout, it's always nice to see those people that you don't see but once a year, and that's a place to see them, because pretty much, you know, a lot of the community is down there. Along with the other 4th of July festivities, the Grand Marshals, Nick and Lisa Rail, it was nice to see them get that consideration, so that's pretty nice. And as was mentioned earlier, I had the Local Transportation Commission meeting where we approved the purchase of some traffic counters, which will help in traffic studies. I did a gender review, had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and as Supervisor Mastin said, we had a kind of a pre-call town hall meeting with Senator McGuire, and we will have the town hall meeting this evening at 6:30, and hopefully you will all attend that. And that is it for me. And now, that's right on cue, because I think we have a 10:25 item, which is probably public comment, if I can get to the right page. Okay, it is 10:25, we will open it up for public comment. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you are addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter, and we will limit you to three minutes. Is there any public comment?
Is this for general public?
This is general public comment.
My name is Linda Sutter, I'm a Republican, I'm pro-life, and I voted for Trump, so that's three strikes against me right now. But, what the Supreme Justice of our land did with Roe versus Wade is very unfortunate, and I will say why. When you have an ectopic pregnancy, which is the baby, or the fetus is lodged into the fallopian tube and not the uterus, that's a life-threatening situation. There are 13 states that now don't recognize that as a life-threatening situation, which is unfortunate, because you have to have surgery. When they discover that the baby that you're carrying inside of you is not developing, it has water on the brain, I don't know, I can't remember what it's called, you have to carry that baby full-term, it's going to be dead. So, a lot of people don't understand the full concept of what their role out for it. And like I said, I personally am pro-life, but I've had two ectopic pregnancies, and I'm here to tell the story. And I think people are just not educated to realize the Supreme Court absolutely had no business in reversing Roe versus Wade. And that is unbelievable to me. Now, another matter, Measure R, after researching, doing the numbers, they didn't add up, and that's ugly, okay? Because every one of you sat here and passed that Measure R report from the C O C, and they didn't do their homework. So, somebody better come up with the right numbers, because right now, they are absolutely incorrect. I mean, this is outrageous. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there any other general public comment?
Chair, I don't have any online.
Please, come up, please come up, you have to be on the microphone so we can hear you.
I have a comment for when you get to the animal control portion, should I do that now or later?
No, we'll bring that up, and we'll have public comment on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other general public comment for items that are, and you can comment on items that are on or off the agenda, but usually we like things off the agenda if you want to comment. Okay, seeing no public Okay, seeing no public comment, then we'll close this public comment period and move on. We're gonna move on to budget transfers. Item number twenty.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that we approved budget transfer zero-seven dash zero-one, the amount of six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars within the Women's Infant and Children Budget Unit due to an unforeseen software issue that excluded this budget unit from the proposed budget presented at our last meeting.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Nothing, Kylie?
I don't have anything online, Chair.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, then we're gonna bring it back to the board. Any discussion? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starky?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we are going to go, it is ten-thirty, so we're gonna go to our ten-thirty timed item, which is to approve the request for a modified road improvement standards as follows. Prior to the issuance of certificate of occupants, the applicant shall construct a driveway from the thirty-foot wide Amador Street right-of-way accessed from Washington Boulevard across the sixty-foot wide Amador Street right-of-way accessed from Madison Avenue to the parcel number A P N one-one-six dash one-four-zero dash zero-two-four. The driveway shall run in an east and west direction beginning on a line extending from east of the southern property line of the parcel of the same number and extending north a distance of twelve feet. This location is where both Amador Street rights-of-way are parallel, creating an opening that is twelve-point-eight feet wide. And two, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall obtain encroachment permit from the Engineering and the Surveying Division for the following improvements. At a minimum, the county's right-of-ways, rights-of-way shall construct said improvements prior to the project completion, driveway approach as requested by the Assistant County Engineer. Rosanna?
Good morning.
Good morning. That was a mouthful.
So, I am, this is gonna be a challenging one to explain and I would suggest you have your board memo because there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle.
This is a challenging one to understand. I had to drive out there and look at it.
Yeah. Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, the property owner has requested a modified road improvement standard which has to meet certain criteria to be considered. And so, I tried to tell the story of this parcel. So, this parcel was part of a subdivision from nineteen-twenty-eight and over time, re-subdivisions have occurred and right-aways have been vacated. So, in nineteen-twenty-eight, it was part of a grid similar to the Birch Ocean View subdivision and it would have had access from Amador Street accessed off of Washington Boulevard, which is presently improved, as well as access off of Amador that is accessed off of Madison. However, over time, what's been developed is the Washington Park subdivision, which re-subdivided almost all of the lots that were in the nineteen-twenty-eight subdivision in this area. And in doing so, access was maintained to these lots, but the improvements that would have been shared by the community and continued, so they would have had like a hundred-and-twenty feet of improvements potentially, were cut off. So, they have legal access. It's just that it's not being developed how it was intended to be developed in nineteen-twenty-eight. And so, the other thing that occurred, so from Amador accessed off of Washington Boulevard, there's a thirty-foot wide public easement and that actually used to extend all the way north to West Madison. Over time, that's been vacated and so, what still presently exists is a sixty-foot wide right-of-way that's about one-thousand, over a thousand feet long. Along that right-of-way is all of the drainage for the Washington Park subdivision, as well as some of the, the majority of the storage and drainage and some other drainage. There's a tremendous amount of drainage in this right-of-way. There's very deep open ditches as well as some underground. So, what the applicant is, so where the thirty-foot easement lines up with the sixty-foot easement is only twelve-point-eight-nine feet wide. That was established by a local engineer, so we know that that is, there is legal access, there is an opening, it is a public easement at that location. From that point, if everything were to develop in that immediate vicinity, at most, that access would serve two parcels. It's a public access, so anybody can use it, but at most, it would serve two parcels. So, we reached out to the fire chief to find out if you only have twelve feet of access, can you make it work? And he went out, he looked at it and he sent us an email saying, yes, we can make this work. So, what the request is, is that the applicant be able to access the parcel from the Washington Boulevard end of Amador Street minimizing the level of improvement to being a driveway approach instead of engineered plans and road improvements for over a thousand feet and significant drainage considerations. So, I hope I explained that well, but if there's questions, I'm definitely here.
You did a good job of explaining and I know that I've got questions, so I'm gonna open it up to board members.
Well, I'm, this isn't my wheelhouse, but when I drove out there, when I looked to drive in through the West Madison side, it's blocked off. Is that, I didn't see a through street.
It's an unimproved right-of-way. So, it's commonly called a paper street. And in this particular case, if you get past the K-Rail and the initial vegetation, it's actually pretty open because we have the drainage down there that's maintained by the county.
Okay, all right. I'll just follow along with they say, or not what they say, but I want to hear what they have to ask, so.
Chris, you got anything?
Not just yet.
Okay. Supervisor Mastin?
I just had a question because I seen the letter from Brenner Storage and I was wondering if the Planning Commission had a copy of that letter when they were considering their recommendation to the board?
The Planning Commission did not have that letter. It can't, so, when we go through this process, the Planning Commission doesn't go through a public hearing. Public hearing is held here, so this is when the neighboring property owners are notified. So, no, they did not have that letter.
Okay.
Supervisor Short?
In regard to that letter, this piece about the Baker access easement and in what appears to be the homeowner's drawing, it looks like that there's, according to him, according to his drawing, there's an easement that Brenner is currently on top of. Is there any?
So, we did.
I mean, Brenner say that that doesn't exist and he says that it does, so where do we go from here?
We did consult County Council on that. So, the county service area has an easement. So, the sewer system has an easement and that is behind Brenner's fencing and it.
On the west?
So, it's inside of Brenner's property, is what you're saying?
Yes, and so, it is fenced in presently. We actually have a manhole and there's also another clean-out that goes to the property that would also potentially be served by this. There actually used to be a house back there and it accessed through this point and so, that's the easement that Brenner's referring to. In this consideration, we could not find, Mr. Yoder has made claims that he should have rights to some of these easements. We cannot, we don't necessarily support that, so we're looking at what we know and what we know is there's twelve-point-eight-nine feet. And so, that's what we have to work with or we know that we have to work with.
So, nobody's been able to provide and we can't find any evidence that there is this Baker access easement?
It does exist. It does exist and it is explicitly for the benefit of Baker.
Which is, it's for the, so Brenner, it's exclusive to Brenner then?
So, it's exclusive to Baker.
So, that's where I'm confused. Who is Baker in relation to Yoder and Brenner?
If you.
And is Brenner's fence in a place where it shouldn't be, is what I'm asking?
Brenner, so, there's multiple things going on here. So, we have the original subdivision, which is the twelve feet or so. Then there's a Baker easement, I'm not exactly sure, I think it's around twenty feet and that is, if you look at page eleven, it's probably, it includes the additional width that says not a part of Amador Street road easement. That's part of the Baker easement. And I'm, I didn't spend a lot of time on the Baker easement, so I don't know the particulars of it. It didn't, it was granted to Baker, so that's why we didn't consider it for this. And then there's the easement that the grant, that C S A secured that doesn't appear to be for road purposes. So, it would work for connecting a sewer lateral into that easement, but it doesn't work for the road portion because that's not why it was secured.
Okay. Is that it? That's it, thank you for me.
Yeah, I've got several concerns. Is there, there seems to be structures and an RV and a porta potty and are any of these permitted items on this property at this point in time?
So, there is an existing code enforcement violation on the property. It's pretty substantial. That's not what we're considering here and actually, what we're trying to do is seek voluntary compliance and so, part of the voluntary compliance would be if we can get approval of the road, then the property owner has stated that they would be able to develop the property, but if they can't, if they have to put in the road all the way from Madison down, they can't afford to develop the property. And so, that's part of the hardship that went into the modification justification.
Yeah, well, I don't want to kind of fix one problem and then create another problem and that's the concern that I have with this one and I don't want to dispute the fire chief, he certainly knows his business, but from what I'm seeing is if there's a car parked on Amador Street that comes off of Washington Boulevard at that intersection, there's no way that you could even drive a car through there, I don't think, in twelve-point-eight feet or whatever it is. So, if there's a car alongside of the road to make that turn, I just don't see any way that a person can do that. That concerns me a lot.
Okay, I'm not visualizing that. You can't obstruct a driveway and that's essentially what this would be.
But they're gonna be on the road right-of-way, they're gonna be parked alongside the road on Amador. I'm talking about Amador going this way. So, if you park here and you gotta make a ninety-degree turn in twelve feet, you're not gonna make it.
Okay. I haven't looked at that, so I don't know.
I mean, there's a house right there, I think, and there's, and when I was there, there was not a car parked there, but it looked like a car could be parked there and I don't think I could have made that turn if there was a car parked there.
I want to make sure you're done before you, and I think someone else is before me, so.
Well, yeah, I just, I just don't want to create another problem down. This looks to me like a twelve-point-eight or say, let's say thirteen feet is not enough on a ninety-degree angle for me. I would much rather see them come off of Madison.
Okay.
That's the correct way to do it and I think for long-term, I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be the answer. Is Supervisor Starky, did you have something else?
Well, it's, because when I drove down there, I mean, this is my only visual and I, but I could see how if somebody was parked in front of the house that Supervisor Hemmingson's talking about, the fire truck could come in and get into that back area, I can. My question is, what is preferred? This twelve-point-eight-nine, what is the standard?
So, our minimum driveway width is twelve feet. So, this meets our minimum driveway width.
Why are we having the required standards then?
The issue here is that it's going across the road right-of-way and so, typically, we would have them meet road standards and so, that would be the forty-foot wide road.
And this is only a thirty-foot wide road?
This would be a twelve, okay. We've got old subdivisions, so that's part of the challenge here. So, yes, Amador Street from Washington is a thirty-foot wide road easement, which is substandard by our standards, but it was approved in nineteen-twenty-eight. So, yes, we have that. But if this were out in the rural part of the county, it could be this very scenario.
Okay. And so, then, and then you're saying there's an existing code enforcement on this property?
Yes, and I did talk to the code enforcement officer yesterday after reviewing the letter and he does intend, if this is not approved, he will be moving forward with a hearing.
I would think even if it is approved, I mean, that he should move forward with a hearing. I mean, you know, I think giving them enough time to clear it up, obviously, but a code violation's a code violation.
He's seeing this as seeking voluntary compliance. Mr. Yoder applied for this in trying to get to the point of building a home to be compliant with our code.
Okay.
It's imperfect, but the code enforcement process is also very lengthy and so, that's part of why we seek the voluntary compliance the way that we do.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to say to Supervisor Starky that I don't think that a fire truck could make that turn without encroaching onto Brenner's property. Now, there may be room enough there now, but if they were to close that off, I think they've got it opened up now, but if they were to close it off, you'd not be able to make that turn.
We have a fire, volunteer firemen here, do you think you could?
Supervisor Mastin, did you have something else?
You want to answer that first? I'll just.
I can't help but agree with Jerry. If there was a car parked there next to that driveway, it'd be a tight one.
So, here's my issue. I do agree that we created hardship with the road. I have issue with there being a serious code violation and then we're gonna make an exception to a road modification, but I do believe that, you know, it's a hardship for the property owner and I do think that it merits consideration. I do have issue though, when there's a serious code violation that's existing and that, those two things don't seem to mix when we're, when we're looking at making a modification for the property owner.
The property owner is here, if you'd like him to come up, he is here.
Well, yeah, we'll hear from everybody, but I just want to get some of the questions from board members out of the way first.
Okay.
Okay? Is there anything else from board members at this time? Okay, we're gonna open it up for public comment.
Did, yes.
Public comment, yeah. Now's your chance.
Yes. I mean, Mr. Yoder, I have a little bit difficult to speak physically. I appreciate your service. As far as the code violation, the only thing that is a violation is that me being there. Everything that's been built, there's a fence, a freestanding deck and a shed, while the shed was existing, are all not required permits. I was a contractor in my twenties, my father and grandfather, and then an aircraft mechanic, which I'm no longer doing. So, anyways, as for this property, there's actually twenty-two feet because there's an easement for the Bakers for the other lots that are in, and there was a house there. They negotiated fifteen, twenty years ago for that easement and it's been recorded. Brenner Storage moved their fence back ten feet, so the opening's actually twenty-some feet. Brenner would, I hired Ward Stover, everybody knows, would know Ward, and he was very helpful. We discovered the sewer was put in and there is a eighty, thirty by eighty-foot no-build easement with the sewer laterals going intended for the lot, intended for the other lots. It's actually R2, but there's big trees, that's not what's gonna be done, but the sewer was put in. Because it was a private road, you can look at older maps, I supplied all that information. I have large packet. Rosanna did a very good job though of putting, minimizing it. But, there is, it's just when it, Brenner did not want to give me the easement. I have Ernie Perry brokered and the prior planning director. I have Ernie Perry brokered, and the, the prior planning director decided on the 22 feet, because the Washington, you know, the Bakers, you know, had three lots there that were being cut off by the Washington Park thing. So they, they agreed on 22 feet. That is good for, for houses on rural standards. My lot is the first of them, and actually, it's partially, partially facing, fronting So it's always had its natural own driveway to where the, the Bakers went a different way. So if you want to figure a split lot, 20-some feet, and, and do it that way. It's been open to the public access. Benner moved their fence back years ago. It's been that way for 20-some years. So you can drive into what used to be, well, the, the initial part of Amador, the undeveloped part, and the part of Adams that's still there very easily. Bill Gillespie, had a conversation with him. He said, for my lot, he, he said there's, he wouldn't even enter that area. They would park it on the pavement, stay on the pavement, and run their hoses. He, he, he's the one that come up with the idea, said the 13 feet is good enough. The reason I was not able, I was, I'm only seeking to build a small modular, one or two bedrooms for me and my daughter. I have a disabled child, and I'm disabled. It was only the matter, I was the contractor, so I kind of had an idea that it was, that it was okay. I took a chance. And as for the violation, I'm, I'm in a situation where I couldn't find apartment. I, I moved here in January 2020, right before the pandemic, one month. But, and it's been very nice here, but I've got the housing authority at the time, couldn't find a two-bedroom apartment, and I had, you know, some money to invest, and I wasn't going to do that. So I've been kind of put in a very bad position, you know? But as far as the code violation, I could walk off today, and there would be no violation, because none of the structures was only, it was only wood fencing, freestanding deck, shed, everything that's not required permit. And Dominic Mello, yeah, he's, he's well aware of it. I mean, yeah, there's been nothing written up.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder.
All right.
I, I do have one, one, a couple of questions for you. When did you purchase this property?
Yeah, in, it's been a year and a half.
And so were you aware at the time you purchased it that there was an access problem? Or a potential problem?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I believe that could be developed and was, yeah.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Yoder while he's here?
No.
Okay, thanks. Is there any other public comment?
Chair, I have some online as well, just so you're aware.
Thanks.
I am the Baker of Baker Property.
Welcome.
And my family's owned that property for many years. My grandfather owned that property, a huge amount of property, and sold it down to this small lot. We lived there for a long time. We outgrew the house, so we moved. We rented the house, and the renters burnt the house down. So we chose not to rebuild, so it's just a vacant lot right now. And we do have a right of easement from Benner Storage. When Benner first came in, the street did go clear down to our property. But he, after so long, moved his fence forward. There used to go clear to the end of the street, to the north end of Adams, was totally open. But he chose to add on, we've got attorneys, and it was just a big mess, so we just finally gave up. But I talked to Tisha Benner, I know her father Ray, and they are not willing to give them right of access. They said they have deeded us right of access, and that we are the only ones they want to have that. I have talked to, I don't know his last name, Jesse, that lives next door to Mr. Yoder. I know that he has said that he has called the police over 20 times because of loud noise, yelling, screaming, fighting, people in and out of the property, 2:30 in the morning, just being super loud. And he said that he's actually had some mental problems because of it. So I tried to talk to the neighbor across the street. I could never get anybody home. I have driven down there. When I went down there, there was the fifth-wheel trailer. There is absolutely no sewer, no water, no power to that property. He had water lines out, or some kind of lines coming out of the trailer, just onto the ground with a board over the top of it. I don't think that's very sanitary. There's two other outbuildings that people were living in, so there's more than just him and his daughter there. There was, when I was there, there was three cars there, and people in the two backstory sheds. I, I know this is a landlocked piece of property. I don't know if it's actually a buildable lot. I don't know the size of the actual buildable lot. But I know that it's been a big issue since March. That's when Jesse, the property owner of the, he's on the southern end of Mr. Yoder's property, contacted me and let me know what was going on, and everything that he's done and called. And he just said he's to the point where he doesn't know what to do, because he just keeps calling and nothing gets done. So.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Ms. Speaker?
Thank you.
And it is not a landlocked piece of property. There is access off of Madison. There's a 60-foot right of way.
Yeah, I, I enquired about Adams Street, because I was told it's a paper street.
Yep.
So I did go to the offices here and ask if that was something that could be purchased, or does it have to stay a street? And they told me it had to stay a street.
Yep, it does.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
Chair, I have a couple online.
Okay.
Jesse, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Yes, hello. Thank you, the board and everybody listening. I just wanted to bring up a couple things. The intention of Mr. Yoder, when going about building his singular modular, single modular home, I don't believe he has the funds, and I don't think that he's going to actually build anything. I'm very empathetic. I'm, my name is Jesse Ferrer. I am the property owner next door, and I'm here with my mom, and she's disabled, and you know, we're just good, decent tax-paying citizens. We're just concerned about, you know, our property. And it's, I want the board to kind of take into, and to note that every person that's bordered by, by Mr. Yoder's property has submitted a complaint to the county. This is, it would be a detriment to the community to allow Mr. Yoder to develop there. The sheriffs have multiple times throughout all hours of the night gone there. I believe there was an incident with a pellet gun. This, this is, this is something that I want the board to really kind of consider. And there are multiple people living there. They're not too, they're homeless transients at all hours of the night that are frankly just, you know, impacting the quality of life of not just myself and my mother, but the children and the families that are behind Mr. Yoder. Vulgarities, all kinds of just unacceptable things that nobody would want to be, you know, forced to go through. And I'm just concerned about the overall property safety. My main complaints to the county have been the, the fire hazards that Mr. Yoder has by pumping propane into sheds and plumbing as well. You know, that's completely against, it's very, very flammable, and it's right against my property line. Now, he's built these sheds hiding under trees, because, you know, he, I don't even know if he's paid taxes. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, everybody's just doing their jobs, and this is a right of way and stuff, but everybody here has spent over $100,000 on their home. This, Mr. Yoder's property was connected to mine. I was under the impression that it was a part of my property until the, the gentleman that I was going to purchase the property passed away, and it was divided, and his son was the, actually, the one that was asking for more money. And I, I tried to buy it to make a long story short, Mr. Yoder purchased that property for under $10,000. I don't believe he, he has the money for the permit or to build a singular, singular modular home. Again, it would be a detriment to the community. I empathize with Mr. Yoder and his disabled daughter. I wish by her, to mark, to quote her, they've been kicked out of every trailer park that they've, that they've stayed.
Thank you.
Because of the noise.
Thank you, Jesse.
Okay.
Kylie, is there someone else?
Yes, one moment. Telephone number with last four digits, 0623. You are on. You just need to unmute.
Hello.
My name is Jean Burris, and I live across Amador, from the property that's currently under discussion. I live directly across from Jesse and also from Mr. Yoder. I'm at 1581 Amador. And I'd like to accentuate my concerns about the access on the street. My street, as you've already heard, is quite narrow. The mailman, the UPS, everyone dreads this street, because turning around and, and doing anything, if there are cars parked parallel to my fence, which is across the street, of course, from Mr. Yoder, it makes the street incredibly narrow. If Jesse, also the adjoining neighbor, also has company, then, then there's almost no street left. If there was a fire, if there was some kind of an emergency situation, we would be in a dire strait. They can get in, but they can't get out. In fact, some of the trucks, I've noticed, don't even try now. They back all the way down Amador Street rather than try to turn around. It's extremely narrow, as was already mentioned, and I cannot believe it could be helpful for the neighborhood to allow any further development of that, that tiny little access point to Mr. Yoder's property. I'm really concerned about this. And that's really my, my biggest point.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Kylie?
Chair, that's all I have online.
Okay. Any other public comment here? Okay, we're going to bring it back to the board then. There's no other public comment? And, and I, I guess I want to emphasize that we're not trying to stop the development of this property. We can't, because there is access off of Madison onto Amador if that street is put through. I, I think, we're just here to decide whether we want to change the road standards in order to accommodate this. And, and so that's, that's what the issue is here. It has nothing to do with the development of the property or anything else. It only has to do with the road standards. Anything else from board members?
Yeah, this, like I think Rosanna said, this is an extremely complex issue, right? And obviously, you have access off of Madison that would allow, but it's, it's to access a lot that's currently valued at 6,000. Property owner, property owner clearly doesn't have the, the dollars to develop that access. Doesn't. And yet, we have a situation here in this community where housing is at a premium. Finding the ability to access property, at least make some usable land around here when we've got people living on the streets. This, to me, is a very complex issue, when we, we do have available property, we do have somebody living on it right now, and so we're, we're creating a standard, potentially double standard. It's okay to live on the bush, but he's got a piece of property, he has got a trailer in, it's not okay for him to live there, and we're going to throw the full weight of code enforcement after him. Yet, I think community development has done a fairly good job bringing something to this board that is a solution, right? A solution that potentially wouldn't cost them a lot. The problem is, is that we've got a property owner that's not a good neighbor, based on everything I've heard from the constituents. And that's a personality issue that potentially shouldn't weigh into this decision. And so that's where I'm having some complications personally. And because I'd like to be able to see as much usable land in this community for housing available, whether he, this individual has the money or not to, to pay or do it. So it is a concern of mine, that I, I would not like us to be thinking about it because of who's currently there, but really about how can we make every bit of usable land usable? And I think Rosanna and, and her team have brought us maybe a reasonable solution for this, but that's just my initial thought. So that's, I'm having some trouble with it.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm not disagree, disagreeing with you. I don't know that it's necessarily a solution. I think it's an alternative.
Sure.
And, and I, I don't know that we're, I don't know that we're trading up. I mean, I don't know that this is, this is actually something. I think we're creating a problem, is, is what I, what I'm feeling, so.
Well, you got a problem there now, Jerry.
I, I agree. And so is there any more discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Well, my only other thing is, is that, you know, Chief Gillespie indicated he could get in there, and, and it would be safe. Perhaps we need a, a letter of that. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that, is there a letter from Chief Gillespie that says that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, so he did put it in writing?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I didn't see it attached. It might have been, but, but I, I'm leaning toward what Supervisor Howard stated, is that he's, he's definitely a bad neighbor, and there's issues that need to be collect, corrected there. But with everything else, you know, it's, I, I'm leaning toward granting him that. So with that, I'd make the motion to approve his request for the modified road improvements.
Can I read what Chief Gillespie emailed?
Let me, let me second her motion, so we could have some discussion on this issue.
Go ahead.
And now you're available.
Okay.
We can have a discussion.
So we did, we did speak on the phone, but he, he just sent me a one-liner. It says, "I support a 12-foot wide driveway from the paved portion of Amador Street to his property."
Where's planning on this? Planning commission?
They made the recommendation that's in front of you.
Correct. And staff's gut feeling on this?
We made the recommendation to the planning commission that was not modified by the planning commission.
Anything else from commissioner, from board members? Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Just one second. I'd like to hear what those recommendations were that you made to the planning commission that weren't modified.
They're right here. It's in the report.
Yeah, I looked at those. So are we not?
Essentially, I took the same board memo to the planning commission with the same recommendations, or I took it, I took the recommendations to the environmental review committee, who recommended the conditions to the planning commission with this almost identical staff report that's in front of you. So the recommendations you're taking action on.
Okay, good.
With that, anybody got anything else?
So I just want to make one comment. And that is that I sincerely hope that the property owner has heard loud and clear from his neighbors about their concerns. And I hope that, you know, code enforcement follows through on the issues, because it's not okay that he has additional people living in circumstances that are unsafe on this property. And it's not okay that, you know, he's not being a good neighbor. And so I hope that code enforcement follows through on the issues, because I, I hope that you are going to become a good neighbor, and that you have heard your neighbors. And that's all I wanted to say.
I want to, and before we take the vote on this, Mr. Chairman, yeah, reflecting on what Supervisor Mastin said, I, you know, this, this has been a tough deliberation for me. I've studied this issue quite extensively. I've talked to staff about it. You know, this, this is not easy for your neighbors, right? Yeah, and your own, you literally are your own worst enemy at this point. And I'm, I'm struggling with that right now. Yeah- with that right now. Yet, we have obviously created a parcel out here that needs some access that you, under traditional means, can't afford to do. You just can't afford to do it. And I don't know if really anybody could afford to do it, to be honest with you. It's a pretty extensive amount of work, right away, to do. So, planning commission, our staff have come up with a reasonable solution to help address it. But, boy, you've got to clean up your act, plain and simple. And I know I for certain am going to be talking with Mr. Mello about this extensively to ensure that you are cleaning up your act. So I hope your neighbors are wrong, to be honest. I don't want to hear the stress out of Jesse, the next-door neighbor, the neighbor across the street. That's just my personal opinion. But I'm just considering the facts in front of us today when I seconded Ms. Starkey's motion.
Yes.
And I hate to go, that's fine. I hate to go backwards, but Rosanna, could you tell me what the requirements are for this driveway? Is this a gravel driveway, a paved driveway? Is there any requirements about this driveway at all?
Yes. So any driveway that connects into the county-maintained road system has to be paved. So this one will require paving. So it'll be a 12-foot-wide paved driveway between Amador Street and his property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, if there's...
Just echo in that alls we're doing here is just okay. And the driveway that's in place, that's being used right now, that's going across that Amador Street right away, that's all we're doing. Can't control who your neighbors are, I guess.
So we could certainly lecture him.
Yes.
Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
No. Okay, motion passes. So we're going to move on now to our 10:40 timed item. We're a little bit tardy. We're going to receive a tobacco retail licensing vaping presentation. And then we're going to discuss and take possible direction to staff. So we're ready for our presentation? Is that going to be online or...
No, I think that IT is going to queue that up for us.
Yeah, there'll be a video.
It's just a quick video.
Okay.
Parents may not realize how many of their kids and kids' friends are vaping, but it's really a huge issue, and there's no upside to it. Tobacco and vape companies are targeting underage people who they know aren't even legally allowed to buy their products.
They believe it's something sweet for themselves, like a candy or something new that they want to try.
Tobacco companies use bright colors or cool names and flavors to trick the kids into thinking that it's like just some harmless thing that you can do like once or twice and you'll be fine.
The problem is that they're able to access it, and the problem is that the marketing behind it is designed to entice kids because if you start young, you're going to become their customer for the rest of your life.
Vaping devices are designed to be well-hidden, and unless you know what they look like or what to look for, you are probably going to have a hard time recognizing them.
I'm a parent and a teacher, and my husband is a principal. Several years ago, when our son was in high school, I found what I thought was a USB device in the laundry, and I took it to my husband and said, "Oh, I hope I didn't ruin this for our son." And he said, "That's a vaping device. I need to take that and have a talk with him."
Many people feel like vaping is just a small thing that they will do one day, and the next day they won't do it, but it's very addicting.
Once kids start vaping and they get addicted to it, it's really hard for them to get off it, especially when they're the only ones that know about it, or their friends are the only ones that know about it.
It's not like, it's just bad kids doing it. It's kind of like everyone, like people you wouldn't expect. There's just so much else behind it where you can't just like pin it on the parent, where it becomes a problem that governments have to step off. It's our everyday life. You go into the bathroom at a high school and someone's vaping. It's to the point where they're not even trying to hide it. After we came back from quarantine, a lot of students were vaping a lot more than before. It felt like it just happened instantly like that.
COVID, it really hit a lot of kids, and they turned to vaping as a way to deal with it. And now it's just kind of snowballing into this huge problem.
I noticed it in eighth grade before quarantine, but when I came to the high school, I knew it had become a problem, but I didn't realize that it was actually this big.
Now it's more like you see it everywhere, in the halls, in the bathrooms, wherever you go, really.
Every passing period, every break. I've seen girls do it in the middle of the classroom when the teacher leaves. They can't sit through an entire class without getting anxious and jittery and nervous because they're just itching for that next hit from their vape.
During COVID, they got stressed out, and it became kind of like their coping mechanism. And now they're just addicted. And now that it's so normalized, more and more people are going to start and are starting.
A lot of people just offer you their vape, and you have to decline it, rather than them being like, "Oh, do you vape?" I know a lot of people that feel peer pressured to vape, and then they get addicted. It's a whole cycle because then they might pressure more people into vaping.
The amount of stress that these kids are under in school and out of school, it is a problem.
Big tobacco is a predator. They prey on our most vulnerable. They do not let up.
I've definitely seen people's moods change, their perspective on life. They don't care as much. It's hard to see them like that.
They're starting at younger and younger ages. It's rewiring their brains, so they're potentially going to become hooked on it for the rest of their lives. I care about all those people and my peers and how it's going to affect us in the future. They still need to grow, and they think it's normal. What's going to happen in the future? Vaping is everywhere. It's in our phones, in our lockers, it's in our classrooms, it's in the bathrooms, it could be in a car, it could be in your best friend's backpack. It could be anywhere. Vaping is normalized and is talked about like it's next week's math homework.
Statistics clearly state that 70% to 80% of smokers wish they could stop, even many of those who are persistent with it and understand how trapped they are.
We have a lot of advertisement for tobacco products posted everywhere, on the shelves, like right where you're going to pay for your stuff. It's really hard to miss.
They are predators. They will look to find ways to hunt them. They'll target them, and eventually they die, whether it's from emphysema or from COPD or heart disease.
People just kind of need to start taking it more seriously, people being those in power who can actually do stuff about it. We tried like proposing a TRL in our local county, and it was pretty much shut down.
The problem lies in the flavors. That's what gets kids interested. That's what gets kids addicted. Personally, my vision of a tobacco retail license would get less kids addicted to vaping.
I think we need to regulate where flavored vaping products can be sold. You would have to go get them at a tobacco-specific store rather than being able to go to the grocery store and supermarket.
It's a matter of, let's put this at the eye level of a child. No, code says it's not to be there. Let's cover the windows of our store so that people outside can't see that kids are buying tobacco inside. No, the windows cannot be covered more than a certain percentage according to those laws.
The tobacco companies and the vape companies are spending millions of dollars on a daily basis to attract and hook new customers. You can kind of compare it to the economy of a small country, the amount of money that they're spending targeting our children, and there needs to be a boundary there. You can't target our kids.
People will call it like government overreach or say that it's none of their business, but it really is when it's children who are the ones who are being affected by it. They need to take it more seriously because the numbers just keep going up and up.
Vaping may be hidden from parents' eyes, but it's really affecting younger people as a whole.
Who's going to speak for us if we are not able to do it on our own, if we're not able to cast that vote?
We really need our leaders and government officials to help with this. They're obviously targeting the younger population, and that's not okay because their brains are still developing, and we need to help them make good decisions. So whatever they can do to help families and help our children not get into those addictive things, it would be wonderful.
Consider the future. Consider how it's going to affect our next generation. What are pros of it? Because I don't see any. It only hurts people.
Since most people vape socially, it's not enough for people to take action on like a household level because a lot of kids may not bring stuff home, but they might be vaping at their friend's house or at school. There's a much bigger response needed to vaping rather than just encouraging your own kids not to vape because a lot of times what parents say is not as strong as what their friends say.
It's important to step beyond party politics and to look at the bigger picture head-on.
This is bigger than an individual. This is bigger than a family. This is bigger than a school.
So that's why it needs to go beyond the parents because that's kind of what it's been left up to right now, and it's not working.
Status quo is absolutely no longer acceptable. A healthy community is where families thrive.
It can happen if we take initiative and we're motivated enough to actually want to make that change.
It gets really hard to be able to advocate for such a big problem alone. I just ask for your help.
Okay, Supervisor Starkey, you want to lead us into the discussion?
Yeah. So after, we've had just a little bit of history, is that we had a presentation by TUP and NorCal for Health, and then we decided to have a workshop with the city. And in the workshop, two of our supervisors weren't available. Supervisor Mastin had not yet been appointed, and Supervisor Howard had other obligations. So I wanted to bring this back today with the full board to have this discussion. We, at the workshop, we weren't able to come up with a consensus. We were split with the city very significantly, and then amongst the three of us that were there, there was some split with that as well. I do believe in hearing from these youth and hearing all the presentations, that the statistics are there, the data's there, it shows the addiction that is possible. I really have done a lot of thinking on how to compare this, and I kind of liken it to car seats, right? We have car seats now, and when my parents drove me up here in 1974 from San Diego to Del Norte County, we didn't have any car seats. My sister, who was an infant at the time, laid on the floorboard the entire time coming up. And now that's just unheard of, right? And the reason why that's unheard of is because the statistics and the data was there to prove that children were safer if placed in a car seat. And that's what we're here today. This is before us today. And these things are, there's going to be another issue tomorrow, right? But today, this is it. And I really want to urge the county, whether or not the city wants to get on board with that or not, but I do want to urge the county to take steps to say that we are going to do something. It might not be perfect. It might not solve all the problems, but we are going to make a stand, and we're going to do something that puts into place something that can protect our youth. And so I am asking the board to consider an ordinance to prohibit the sales of flavored nicotine and tobacco in the county.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Any public comment?
Brother. Okay, so in the '70s, you'd keep going to the bathroom, and people would be smoking at the schools. That's just something that we did. Some people are going to do it, some people aren't. I can remember going to the drive-in when I was a little kid, and my parents were chain smokers, and they'd roll up the windows, and we'd watch the movie, and my eyes are burning and everything else. And I tried smoking. I didn't like it. I just did it with my friends, you know? It was just one of those things. And then in the '90s, they made laws, no more smoking in bars, parks, and whatnot else. And I can get that, but I can't go along with taking another liberty of choice away from individuals. They're going to, yeah, they're kids, but kids are going to do what they're going to do. And you can write an ordinance and not sell the stuff here, but they're still going to have access. So I think it's a waste of time for this ordinance. Kudos for those kids for getting involved. I understand, you know, their concerns, but everybody has a choice. And I don't think government overreach is going to stop it. So wasting tax dollars on another ordinance is ridiculous, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Melody Cannon-Cutts. I'm program manager for Public Health, for Health and Human Services. And I would like to thank you for revisiting the possibility of passing a tobacco retail license ordinance in our community. The Public Health Branch houses the Tobacco Use Prevention Program called TUP, and this is an important objective for our program in our community. I'd also like to thank you for listening to our youth and our community members, like NorCal for Health and our Coalition for Tobacco-Free Del Norte, on the impact of tobacco use in our community. Additionally, I'd like to ask, offer some assistance. Our TUP program and our coalition can support the county through education and outreach to all of the tobacco retailers here in Del Norte County to assist in the transition to a tobacco retail license requirement. And if there's any questions from the supervisors or the community, we're here to help. We have several members of our coalition here. We have Amber, and Alyssa, and Wendy, and Denise, and we're just thrilled to be able to have this before you again. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Sure.
Sam Straight. I live in the county. I didn't grow up in a family that smoked. I don't smoke personally myself, but the question I have that I ask myself all the time is, when are children going to learn how to make appropriate decisions in their life that don't involve the powers-to-be to make them for them? When are they going to be able to do it on their own and become productive adults and be able to make appropriate decisions if the powers-to-be make them for them all of their lives, beginning when they're children and continuing on throughout life? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I don't have any online.
Thank you. Board members? Chris?
Give him a chance in case someone...
Denise Doyle-Schnacker, and a member of the Coalition. I think a key point that was made in the video by someone, and I don't remember her exact words, so I'm going to paraphrase, that tobacco companies spend basically the amount of a small country to target children. My kindergarten, first, second, third grade students can tell you exactly what the flavors are. They've never smoked, I would hope, but they are exposed to it daily as they walk into the convenience stores, as they go in to, you know, get a treat. They get a candy bar, oh, and right there at their eye level, or just behind where you're paying your money, that you can't miss. In the pharmacy, tobacco is there, you know, in our healthiest place, and our kids are being exposed. And I think that's something that we're forgetting, that this is an insidious way of targeting littles. And yes, I agree, our young people do need to know, need to have negotiation skills, all of those preventative things. all of those preventative things that we say, oh, this is the way you say no. Not just say no, but there's a whole other piece that goes into that. They're starting with our babies. And we have, as a county, we have an opportunity to limit that exposure, and just limit it. Maybe, I understand businesses need to make money. They can make money on other things, not our babies.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I have a hand raised online now. Kat, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hi, Kat Moreno. I am also a part of the Coalition, and so just two points that I wanted to make. The first one is that there actually is some data around communities decreasing smoking rates among kids when there is a TRL in place. And then the second part is that when kids, particularly adolescents, smoke, it does rewire the neural pathways in their brain and makes them more susceptible to becoming addicted to substances, not just tobacco, but other ones as well. So I just wanted to let you know those two points, and the Coalition would be happy to provide data on that. I don't have them at my fingertips, but we can get that for you.
Thank you. Kylie, anybody else? Any other, any other public comment at this time? Okay, thanks. I'm going to close the public comment period for this. Supervisor Mastin?
Yeah, I did watch when there were discussions over this matter with the city and the county. And I have worked with, as a business owner, with teens in the tobacco efforts in the past and have adopted within my business non-smoking, non-vaping on the premises to support their efforts and just believing in that that's the right thing to do as a business owner. And I think that if we were leaders within the business community and we were responsible and were educated in the retail business and how we display and sell the products, that we wouldn't make it so blatantly in the faces of our youth that that would be a responsible thing to do in our sales. And it wouldn't be necessary for us to look at ways that we might offer some assistance to protect the health of our children. And I do think that it's a huge issue for us here in Del Norte County. And I know this because I've listened to some youth recently because I was at Del Norte High, and we were talking in a conversation with the youth about the blatant use of it at Del Norte High and in the restrooms, and how many people were vaping in the restrooms. And I was quite shocked because, as you were saying, Linda, when I was in high school, there were groups of teenagers who would smoke outside. In the restrooms, there might have been one in my time, which is different. In the restrooms today, the number of students vaping in the restrooms are numerous, at shocking numbers, and that's not okay. And so, and it's not monitored. You don't find teachers or any adult going in and monitoring what's occurring. And so, you know, I do feel that we have a responsibility. I don't know what that looks like, but I think that we should take a look, at the very least, to see what that might look like in an ordinance form, and then decide whether or not we want to impose an ordinance. But we should at least take a look and see what staff might develop for consideration here at the board level, because I don't know what that's going to look like, and it may not be all that imposing, and maybe there just are some simple, remove the stuff off the window so you can see. Because I know in past surveys, they sell to minors, and that was done locally with tobacco. And that was in, you know, where they intentionally, the Coalition went forward and had children go in and purchase, and they were able to purchase, and they were underage, and they were never checked. And so I don't know recently what that looks like, but even if it was simple things like that and not having it so readily in-your-face kind of advertising, you know, I think we should at least look and see what that, you know, may look like. I think our children's health is important, and I think we have a responsibility. And I think that it's, we should take up NorCal about helping to educate our local businesses about what they can do to be responsible in their retail sales.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard, you have anything? Want to add?
Yeah, I just want to revisit this with Supervisor Starkey, and really what, what are we being? I see the text, right? But what are we really considering directing staff to do at this time? If you had your wherewithal and board support, what would we really be directing staff to do?
What I'm hoping, and to work with County Council, and he has some ideas. There's templates, there's other counties throughout California. A lot of them are leaning now toward this, the TRLs and prohibiting the flavored tobaccos and nicotine. So if that's okay, if I don't pass the buck here, if I could ask County Council to weigh in on some of the ideas that he has, if that's all right.
So you said specifically prohibiting it from sale in the county?
I would like to prohibit.
Okay, so what is, so a tobacco retail vaping license is not really what we're talking about here. It's literally banning flavored tobacco in the county.
In county businesses to be sold, yes.
To be sold.
The model ordinance that we were provided with is, it's a license which gives probably maximum enforcement control because you can take it away rather than just find them. And there's lots of different things in there, kind of all a cart, what kind of regulations you want. I think adopting that as is would be maybe more regulation than staff is really able and prepared to do, but a simple ban is not that hard if the board wants to. Some simple rules about advertising would be hard. It wouldn't be a huge lift to come back with an ordinance to review. There's a lot more pared down than kind of the starting point. This is all kind of stuff that we've talked about. I don't have anything to do than what we talked about at the joint meeting with the city. But, you know, if there's an appetite from the board, we can come back with specific options to consider.
Can I ask some more questions, Chair?
Sure.
So that's, I mean, there's a difference between licensing, basically, which would potentially control how the product is sold, how it's displayed, et cetera. And then there's a simple ban, as you suggest. How's this relate to the referendum on the ballot right now, California Proposition 31, and whatever we as voters in the state of California do in November?
If, if the referendum fails, if I have this right, then basically the ban will go into effect statewide. The retail license ordinance does a lot more than just a ban that I don't think would be in that state law. Like, there's a, you know, density controls, kind of like what we talked about with cannabis, X number of feet from another retailer or something like that. But if, if the board just wants the ban, I think it would functionally be just, you know, some assurances in case that referendum succeeds.
So if the referendum succeeds, a yes vote potentially for Proposition 31, what then does that do? Be clear about this, please.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if it passes, if California Proposition 31 passes, what does it do?
I think we're just at the status quo.
We're status quo.
Yeah.
Basically, SB 793 stays in place.
That's my understanding. I haven't looked at it since we had that joint meeting, so I think that's right.
Okay. I'm just trying to be clear on this because it is on the ballot for November.
Yeah.
And we would potentially be directing staff to work on an issue that may or may not be relevant potentially. I don't know.
Well, if, if it's just the pure ban, then yes, it may be taken care of on its own in November. If there's other things the board wants to do, like some control of advertising, that would be something that wouldn't really be affected. We're not preempted by, you know, that state law. It's not like the referendum would invalidate local regulations. So yeah, I understand if the board wants to wait and see, you know, or if there's something more expansive than just a ban, there would be value in doing that before.
Supervisor Short, anything?
Yes, during the conversations that we had at the city-county blended meeting, we talked about that quite a bit, and I think that was one of the key things to not coming to an agreement, I guess. Another key thing that we took away from there was that the kids were telling us that they weren't buying them at the stores. They were getting them, getting the vape from other sources. So I think that was one of the key things that played into that discord or indecision that, you know, we couldn't come to a consensus there between the city and the county. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, by the kids' own testimony, you know, that getting, getting the vapes illegally from the retailers wasn't happening. So I believe that's why we couldn't come to a decision there.
Yeah, and this was based, this item was put on here for Supervisor Mastin, Supervisor Howard, me to kind of weigh in on here, and I'm glad this has been brought back so we could have a discussion about it because it is a serious issue, a very serious issue. I was just, while we're having a meeting here, I was just asking my son again, because we've had these discussions in the past, how prevalent is it at the high school? You know, he's junior year this last year and back in school. Didn't see it a lot prior to COVID. Sees it a lot now, so statements that were made essentially during this video are 100% correct. But I said, you know, do you see tobacco? Smoking? No, don't see it as much anymore. Do you see chewing tobacco? No, don't see it at all. Do you see marijuana? No, kids are afraid to get caught, so they're not even doing it around campus. Vaping, however, extremely prevalent, so I think Supervisor Mastin was 100% correct about that. But I basically asked, you know, how are you getting this stuff? Older siblings, you know, folks got, they're going to get access to it one way or another. I mean, shoot, you can get access to anything when you're in high school. I don't think that's ever changed. So I think to address one of the public comments that was made earlier by Mr. Straight, you know, how do you, when you have changing societal norms and you basically have a collapse, which we're definitely seeing here in our society, where parenting has no longer become parenting, right? It's a hands-off approach to kids. How do we as a society, how do we as a government try to address these issues that we're seeing when you have a very strong lobby, extremely strong lobby, tobacco that has an incentive, dollars, which our company through capitalism does allow for, to flex their muscle to try to get kids hooked? And for me, this is a tough challenge, right? You had kids, I had kids, but we parent. Majority of folks in our community maybe have a tough time parenting or maybe have a hands-off approach to it. So this, to me, is a difficult discussion. I do think it needs to be explored further and weighed in, and I do appreciate Supervisor Starkey bringing it forward to us again. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to take the last word on comments, was my prerogative. And, and I think some good points were made, and to address Mr. Straight's issues and maybe us weighing in on it. And I think this has, this has to do with a level playing field. Kids are not on a level playing field. They cannot compete against big tobacco companies and the amount of money that they're putting into advertising to draw these kids in. So when they're not playing on a level playing field, and we're here to level the playing field up, that's my position on it. So Supervisor Starkey, if you want to make a motion or a direction?
I think that, yeah, I'd like to ask, to give staff direction to create some ordinances to be brought back before the board. Nope, nope, nope.
Watch your, we're only talking about what's on the agenda. So if there's not an item on the agenda that we're talking about, you don't want to cross over into something that's not there. If you're wanting to direct the staff to do more than a TRL.
That's exactly what it says, to provide a possible discretion to staff to draft an ordinance related to tobacco retail licensing. That's what's on the agenda. That's what I thought I was saying.
Just want to make sure that you're staying within the boundaries.
Anything else you want to correct me on?
No. And ordinance, one ordinance, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion from board members? I know that Supervisor Howard and Supervisor Mastin kind of have this competition on who can bloviate the longest, so we're going to start putting them on a stopwatch.
I'll just say, there's been a lot of cash pumped into this thing right now in the tune of 22 million. So, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of muscle being flexed to ensure that capitalism lives as relates to vaping products, and yeah, there is something we can do at a local level.
Thank you. Okay, we've had public comment. So Kylie, would you, I'm going to poll the vote on this for consensus on directing staff to create an ordinance?
So you want me to poll a vote? You're not just asking consensus?
I'm going to poll a vote.
Okay.
On making sure that we've got everybody on board.
Okay.
Or as many people as we can.
Supervisor Short?
No.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. So directed. Okay? All right. We are going to move on to the consent agenda.
Chair, I'd like to pull item number 10 if possible.
Okay, we're going to pull item number 10, and we're going to pull item number five for discussion. So we're going to take public comment on those two items separately, and we are going to start with item number five on the consent agenda, which is to approve and authorize the chair to sign the renewed agreement with St. Helena Hospital, DBA Adventist Health St. Helena, located in St. Helena, for psychiatric inpatient hospital services. Supervisor Short?
Yes, I pulled this item just strictly because of the cost of the item. I think it was, meeting before last, we, on the consent agenda, had a similar item. It was inpatient services, but it was like 330-some dollars a day. And now this one's coming up for St. Helena, and it's, it's less than five times that. So I was hoping Rynell would speak to us about that and tell us why it's so expensive.
Sure. So Rynell Brown, Director of Department of Health and Human Services. It's pretty simple. It's really about level of care. So the Crestwood contract that we previously approved was a lower level of care. So it would be like a step down where this Adventist is a placement for like a 5150, so it's more of like that emergency secured lot setting. So there's basically, we contract with multiple providers. Different facilities will accept patients with different criteria, and so it's just putting that in place to have that ability to place someone for those services. So it's just that different level of care and why the cost difference, most at that higher level of care, that acute care, range from $1,000 to $3,000 per day.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rynell. Appreciate your input.
Any public comment on item number five on the consent agenda? You didn't know if that polled for a separate vote or anything?
No, no, thank you. The question was answered.
Appreciate it. Any public comment for this item? Okay, thank you. So we're just going to include that in the consent agenda when it comes up for a motion. And we're going to poll item number 10 for discussion. Supervisor Starkey?
Yes, if I could ask Director Brown to come back up. I do have a few questions that I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on. Are we required by state law to have a public health officer?
Yes, according to the California Health and Safety Code, Division 101, Part 3, Chapter 1, Section 10100, we must appoint a public health officer.
Okay.
The Board of Supervisors must.
And there's ramifications if we don't have one?
So there aren't particular sanctions or penalties as far as like a funding situation, but we are required in order to, by the Health and Safety Code, to appoint.
Okay, great. Okay, great. And then I know in the actual board report, you've listed a few of the Health and Safety Code sections that the public health officer is expected to complete. Could you name one or two of those for me?
Sure. So let's see, 101030, the county health officer shall enforce and observe in the unincorporated territory of the county all of the following orders and ordinances of the Board of Supervisor pertaining to the public health and sanitary matters, orders including quarantine and/or other regulations prescribed by the department, statutes relating to public health. Also in 101040, the local health officer, health officers, excuse me, may take any preventive measure that may be necessary to protect and preserve the public health from any public health hazard during any state of war emergency, state of emergency or local emergency as defined by section 8558 of the government code within his or her jurisdiction. Also, under preventative measures means abatement, correction, removal of any other protective step that may be taken against any public health hazard that is caused by a disaster and affects the public health. So.
That's, that's great. And so of those, has Dr. Stutz been able to complete those, those mandated requirements? Has he been able to complete those for us?
Yes.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, when Dr. Stutz was hired, was there any other applicants who put in for this position when the position was flown?
No, the position was flown. There were zero applicants or responses received. It was extended through the RFP process. Zero applications were received. So we connected with Dr. Stutz to a contract.
Perfect. And then my final question is, Dr. Stutz qualified to do this job in the 10 to 15 hours per week that we're agreeing to in this contract?
Yes, and he's also available for the necessary 24-hour coverage need, or to extend the hours such as in a public health emergency, just like our previous health officer was.
Was. Oh, great. All right, those are my questions. I'm ready to.
Great. Good job. Any other questions on this item from board members?
No, thank you, Supervisor Starkey. Those were my questions, and I was going to pull this item for those very same questions. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Before Renell steps away, since we're opening this door, so, public health emergencies. We had a state public health emergency that came down. The public health officer is required to enforce the state public health emergency. Is that correct? How am I interpreting that?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I think there are some provisions about how we can locally enforce that.
With a lesser restriction or just greater than what the state?
I believe it's greater. I defer to county council first.
Yeah, specifically in statute, it is the health officer's job to enforce the state health officer orders. And we can be more restrictive but not less.
So I guess, let's, let's go there. Because in the statute you just read, the word enforce came up. Joel just said the word enforce. What the heck does that mean? Because this board has been challenged on that consecutively throughout COVID. What the word enforce means? And what authority given by the state does a public health officer have to enforce?
The health officer basically can write fines and things, but it also specifically says the sheriff can enforce his orders. So, you know, the health officer, even with the point by the board, he has independent authority from the board, just like the sheriff does. So it's a kind of a complicated state and local system that honestly doesn't work with the board that much other than choosing the guy.
Complicated is right.
Anything else from board members? I'm going to open this up for public comment. Thank you, Renell. Yeah, Supervisor Starkey had all the questions that I wanted. Any public comment?
My understanding is, he works 10 or 15 hours a week? Is that right? Are you kidding me? He doesn't even live here. He lives in Weed or Wyrica. I'm not even sure. Once in a while, he'll show up on the television up there, and you'll hear his kids in the background. So I, this guy, and then he shut our county down for nearly two years, for Christ's sakes. What's wrong with that picture? It wasn't until last August that we really had a COVID issue. But the rest of the time, we were shut down and we lost businesses, and we haven't recovered. And now we've got this doctor who sits on his bottom up in the mountains there, couple hundred miles away, making decisions for this county, and you're all right with that? No. I think we can do better. I think, folks, we got to find somebody else. There's a new gig in town. Why not ask those doctors? I just seen it on social media. It's come across everybody. They're taking care of Medicare and Medi-Cal and everything else. Maybe there's doctors here. Can't remember the name of the organization. Dr. Stutz hasn't done anybody any favors. My friend who died this past year, this doctor said he died of COVID. He did not die of COVID. He had an embolism in the lung. But he told the public, oh, it was COVID. The hell with that. He's a liar. He doesn't do a good job. And sitting on your butt 200 miles away making decisions for this community is outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have one on Lane Chair.
Okay.
Brandon, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you, board. Glad this is on the agenda. It's too bad it's on the consent agenda, where you continue to just pass things without critical thought. It would be nice if we signed a new contract to possibly see if other people were interested in that contract. Was that done? Dr. Stutz has crippled our community. I'd just like to note that we do have a COVID success out there. My mom just successfully beat COVID. She has to deal with Alzheimer's now, but we'll see if there's any help out there for that. We had to bring her home. He, the policy that this doctor has imposed has crippled our healthcare facilities. We can't find enough help anywhere. I'm asking you to pull this consent item, vote no. Find another doctor who doesn't violate our constitutional rights. Threatening to throw us in jail for not wearing a mask is unconstitutional, and it is not consensual to violate the Constitution. Please consider not hiring Dr. Stutz. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I don't have any on Lane.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Norma Williams. I'm chapter president of the Dona County Employees Association, SDIU, but I am also a very proud, proud county employee and proud member of the public health branch of Department of Health and Human Services. When it comes to COVID and what came with this pandemic was something that was unforeseen. Our public health officer at the time was Dr. Warren Ray Walt. And as a result of this pandemic, all of the regulations, all of the policies and procedures, the lockdown, all of that came from the federal government. That came down from the feds to the state. CDPH then directed all the local health jurisdictions, all of the public health officers in those jurisdictions, to enforce what was coming down from the feds. That did include a lockdown. Quite frankly, that was done for the protection of everyone. This pandemic, this disease is, this whole COVID has been absolutely horrific. At public health, we have seen that over the past two and a half years. We saw it under the Alpha variant. We definitely saw it with the Delta variant, which, by the way, killed people in this community. We know, we know that for a fact because we did the contact tracing and the case investigation for all those people that died in this community, as well as their family members. And we continue to do that today with the Omicron variants that are infecting this community still to this day. The public health officers, they do the job that is required by law. It's not just public health emergencies, but also making sure that we deal with STDs in this community, also in making sure that we can even give out immunizations and vaccines in this community. We, there's more to public health than just the pandemic. He oversees that as well. Dr. Stutz may live in another community, but he does come here to work in our hospital's emergency room. We know that for a fact as well. The public health staff, I am still speaking. So, quétate quieto. Estoy hablando ahorita. We still support our public health officer, and we will continue to do so. So we ask that you continue supporting Dr. Stutz, extend his contract, because right now, we don't have anybody. We didn't when Dr. Ray Walt retired and Dr. Stutz stepped in. And we're asking that you, that you still continue his contract. There's still a hell of a lot more to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to keep this item pulled off and ask for a motion on item number 10, separate from the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We've had public comment. Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Now I would ask for a motion on the rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Chair, can we just clarify that number six is being pulled as well in the motion?
Yes, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Item six is pulled off the agenda, and we are not voting on that. I have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. And I'm going to ask for public comment on the rest of the consent agenda. Yep. But I'd like to ask the board to look at number 13, the sheriff's uniforms. The sheriff's asked for two sets of uniforms. I'm simply here to ask for four sets. I mean, just stretch it out a little bit. So we can get all these new deputies in here, and they don't have to invest their first week's salary buying a change of color that the sheriff would like to implement, which I think is a very good decision. It's good to distinguish sheriff's deputies from the local police. But I think that we need to have four sets of uniforms. I think we need to reward those who are already here. I think we need to give them more uniforms to wear so they're not wearing the same uniform like I do three or four days in a row. And I have another point. And I think it would bring the color change from black to tan and green along a lot more, a lot quicker and a lot more uniformly. So I think it's a great idea. Two's good, four would be better. Thank you. Yeah, and just to address that, they, they are allowed a uniform allowance. So the two are just to get them on board, and then they use their allowance to buy the others. So. Great. Okay. It's already been taken care of, basically. Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. We have reached the 12 o'clock hour. Is there a need for board members? Or we're good? We're going to push through? Okay, we're going to go to item number 18. I've, no, I've scattered all over it, but item 18, which is to discuss and take possible action on placing porta potties and trash bins on South Beach for the months of July and August, as requested by Supervisor Mastin.
Yes, and so I brought this up at the last meeting, and it's because of the increased tourism and local usage, and, and our weather just has, has been incredibly hot, and it has increased the number of individuals who are utilizing our, the beaches at the South Beach and, and the environmental concerns and, and the safety in that area. And just, I just think that it's become a necessity for us to provide for trash bins and for porta potties at, at the South Beach area.
Thank you. Thoughts from board members?
I just wanted to know the cost of this, if you've looked into that.
I haven't looked into it. And, and so I, I have used them in the past myself, and I don't know, do you know what that is, Neil?
Yes, I do. We looked into this, and to place porta potties at South Beach where they were during the Fourth of July festivities would cost approximately $730 to put them there through August.
And what about the trash bins?
We haven't discussed the trash bins. Trash is completely something separate. We do have a franchise agreement with, you know, through Dona Salt Waste Management Authority and Recology, where there is an agreement to place 60 trash and recyclables combos throughout the county and the city. They're currently at designated areas, but those can be changed through the authority and with meeting with the city and county. So whether or not our permit through Caltrans would have to be modified to include trash down there, we don't know yet. The, the current permit runs through the end of July, and we can have a requested email sent to them, to their engineer, who will review that and would most likely approve an extension through August for the porta potties, but the trashcans have not been included in that yet.
Yeah.
This is not precedent-setting for us.
No.
I mean, we've done this in the past.
Well, the porta potties, I don't have issue with at all. Placing the trash bins out of their dumpsters, placing trash dumpsters down there, I'm totally against, because I, I just think that that's going to be a mess. Now, if we've got trash cans or something that's smaller, I don't know how, I don't know what we do on, on Pebble Beach or, or that, but I think those are just regular trash cans. And if you put dumpsters down there, they're going to be full in the first two hours, and everybody's.
So I'm okay with trash cans, just so we have something.
I think we need to look into that. I think we need to look into what the cost is. And if we can add those on to, to what we've got going and what the cost is, but, but I would be in favor of, of doing the porta potties for sure. If we can extend that encroachment permit from Caltrans and get those going, I would be all in favor of that. And then looking into, maybe bring that back, look into what the trash cans, if there's a cost involved there, what that cost is, and bring that back, back to the board.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with Supervisor Hemmingson on this. I, I think the trash piece opens up a huge can of worms that we're really not prepared to discuss fully today.
I can bring it up to Salt Waste Meeting that's coming up next week, possibly writing into that next contract to just increase the number of paired bins down at South Beach for the months of July and August, maybe just for a point of discussion, just to see what kind of costs, yeah, I think we might be looking at.
Yeah, I, I think the concern for me along with that, and, and not that it's not better that they dump all the trash in one particular area, but if the, if the can or bin gets full, then the trash is just going to sit around that bin. And somebody's going to have to physically go move it, and that's not going to be Recology. So we need to have somebody else.
Yeah, I was thinking, I, I agree with you on the, on the bigger bins. Yeah, it would be a problem.
Well, I think either the trash can.
Those, those little paired trash cans that are, you know, they're on a, I think they pick them up like six days a week now, I believe, even on Sunday. I think there's one day a week that they don't get it picked up. But I thought that, just, it could be a point of discussion. I could bring it up.
Who picks it up?
Recology.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm all in favor of, of that. I, I think we do need to have some facilities down there, and I'm all, all for it.
In doing some of our research, there was identified that there are several trash bins along Anger Way, as well as porta potties. There's also a public restroom down there that's past the chart room. I spoke with the harbor master, and he said that there is an issue with vandalism and, of course, overloading the trash bins, but the alternative is even worse.
Right.
So there are, there are four cans there. And as I mentioned before, there are the 60 pairs that are placed by Salt Waste Management Authority. And I know that we can look into, actually, maybe changing the location of one of those pairs during the months of July and August. And again, like I said, it would come as a recommendation from the authority.
Yeah. But the other thing, are we going to have to get an additional encroachment permit in order to put those trash bins on the Caltrans?
That's something we'd have to look into.
So we'll have to look on, into that.
Yes, if it's even allowable.
But I think we've got consensus to move on with the porta potties. Let's get that taken care of. And let's bring the trash bin thing back to the board, and we'll get some.
Okay, and so the board is also aware, and speaking with Rota Ruter, who provides the- the porta potties, there isn't an ADA unit available any time during this period, so there'll be regular restrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion on that, Council?
It, I mean, if everybody agrees, we do direction by consensus without a motion all the time.
Okay, direction, consensus. Okay.
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
That's all right. Listen, I drive, oh my God, South Beach is a mess. I drive past it several times a day, and I am so pissed, because we've got, I know how important TOT taxes to this community. I know how important getting any kind of tax is to this community, right? And we've got signs down there, no overnight parking, but there's been two RVs there since July the 5th, and so I, on Sunday, asked, I saw the guy, $200,000 rigs with the white, brand-new white Cherokee Jeep right behind him, sitting there for the whole way. I said, "Well, this is a $200,000 rig. Oh, yeah." I said, "So, can you tell me, how is it you can't afford to pull into a RV park?" He said, "Well, there's no space." I said, "Sir, there's plenty of space here. There's plenty of RV parking here." "Well, I got cancer, and I only got $200 in my pocket." "Oh, all right, well, you got cancer. Okay." So, I left after he stopped screaming obscenities. That's okay. So, what's he doing? Two great big white bags of garbage. Right there by the trash cans. So, where's their sewage going? Doesn't anybody think about that? So, you're not getting taxes. You're getting free garbage service. You're not, and we don't know where your sewage is going from your RV. Now, this morning, coming here, there were four of them, Feng Shui, four RVs, planning on sitting there for God knows how long. Two of them been there five days, six, hell, I don't know. What's today's date? It's been since July 5th, and nobody's enforcing the signs. They're getting free parking, free garbage service, and the sewage is going out to the ocean. What can I say? If we're not going to do any better than that, then what are we even discussing it for? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? I apologize for not bringing up. Kylie, anything?
I do appreciate that comment, though, Mr. Chair, because I had the same question, and I've been driving by there every day, is why are they able to be parked there when there are signs that say no parking?
You have to call the sheriff.
Okay, so we've got direction to staff, and we are going to go on to item number 19, which is to discuss and give direction to county administrator to administration to assess possible alternatives for the Animal Services Control Department's placement within the county's organization structure. Neil, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Supervisors. This is an item that was discussed briefly, and as Supervisor Starkey mentioned, with the department head currently at the ag commission and animal control department, Justin Riggs, and he was supportive in us assessing possible solutions within the county structure for a different location for animal services and animal control, and doing some preliminary research on the structures in other counties. This is very uncommon for animal services and animal control to be under the direct supervision of the ag commissioner. We're one of only four counties in California who have something similar to this, where either animal services or control is under the ag commissioner. So, in looking just briefly at other counties, there are other possible solutions, at least two or three we've already identified just through our preliminary research, and we'd like the board to give us direction to look further into this.
Okay. Supervisor Starkey?
Well, we have somebody here that does a lot of work out of the volunteer, no, she volunteers out at the animal control, so I'd love to hear from her, but I'm very supportive of this. Director Riggs was very supportive of this. We're looking either, I mean, all options are on the table, is essentially, right now, correct? So, we're not like just saying, okay, it's going to be the sheriff, or it's going to be code enforcement. You're looking at any potential place that this would make more sense.
That's correct, and we plan on bringing at least two alternatives back to the board by August 23rd.
Oh, and that was my other question. Thank you for reminding me of that. Is the swiftness of this due to the fact that we need to have it within the budget, or will this fall within how this budget is aligned?
It shouldn't have much of effect on the budget. It's simply taking the current budget that's been approved by the board on June 28th would just potentially move under another umbrella, another department.
Okay, so it's not going to impact it that way?
Right.
Okay, great. Those are my only two questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up for public comment. Here's your chance. Thanks for waiting. Appreciate it.
My name's Lorraine Yamakido. I'm a volunteer with Dogs of Del Norte, retired manager, so I can say, based upon my experience, yes, it should go under another purview. Because of the outdated way they keep records at the pound, I've been keeping data myself. So far this year, 189 dogs have come into this county, three horses, four goats, two pigs, and one rabbit. It has a very small staff to take, to care for them. We average 33 dogs a day there. Right now, we have 40, and you only have one supervisor and one ACO. So, who's caring for these dogs? It's the volunteers. The volunteers have transferred 79 dogs last year to rescue shelters, 77 so far this year. The volunteers handle the adoptions. We've done the adoptions, 25 adoptions this year. The Humane Society, in May, we handled the spay and neuter. We've done 59 this year. So, they need someone to reassess, organize properly staff. The volunteers are exhausted. The staff is exhausted. On a side note, I do want to, I have a lot of time left. I do want to thank you all for approving the kennels. Those of you that have not been out there, these are what the typical kennel looks like. And so, it's the volunteers that are also putting together a site plan to place it, but, excuse me, but there should be someone at a higher level in the county that is doing this, not a volunteer. I spend five to six days a week there, and Danielle spends a ton of time there as well.
And we appreciate it.
You know, because this community, they love their animals, and I'm sure they appreciate what we all do, but we need the county to be more involved and to properly organize it. Any questions?
Questions?
No, it's going to be more directed toward Neil. Is through this restructuring, can we look at some of the points that Lorraine brought up? I mean, because one of the things is that she does keep all the records of all the dogs. So, is there a way in this, if we're looking to put it to another department, are we also going to be looking about how all the work that the volunteers are doing should be county-paid employees? Are we going to include all that in this restructuring?
One of the main things we looked into through, over the past year, and then some of the struggles we've been dealing with at Animal Services, has been a case management system, which actually would help a lot in tracking some of these things that she's having to do as a volunteer. We can, we've also looked at staffing over and over again. There are part-time positions that are allocated to Animal Services that have just been impossible to fill. We've recruited and filled them, and people have quit, and we've recruited and filled them, and people have quit, or they don't show up. We've also added another position at Animal Services during this, last year. Board Supervisors approved an Animal Services Supervisor position for the first time since I've been here in over 20 years, and so now, we do have three Animal Services positions, but we've still only been able to fill two of them, even though we've recruited constantly since then.
So, you'll be looking at a whole kind of organizational restructuring depart, yeah, that's my question.
Basically, continue what we've been doing, yes, for.
But on the record-keeping, there is software for this, instead of doing it by Excel.
Correct.
Yeah, would easily track it, instead of a volunteer doing the record-keeping and emailing it to the county on a daily basis.
Yep, we're looking into that.
We agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, during our research, we've identified two systems, and we're waiting for a third, for a third quote, under the rules of procurement per county, and if we can only find two, then we'll work with the information we have for the two systems we have now.
Sure. Any other public comment? Okay, then, by consensus, we have consensus. Staff, bring us back something. We're looking forward to it. Okay, moving on to legislative and budget issues. We have anything, Neil?
Nothing.
Chris? I don't have anything.
Nope, nothing for me.
All right, nothing? Kylie, did we get it all?
No, we approved to add the interim Child Support Services Director to the agenda, but we didn't actually vote on it.
You're absolutely right. Thank you so much. That's why we keep you around.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I knew there was one reason.
There's a reason somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve, we appoint the county administrative officer as the interim director of Child Support Services per County Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 30 dot U, effective immediately.
Second, I have a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Public comment on this item?
Chair, I have none online.
Seeing no public comment, then we're going to bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Good luck with that, Neil.
Okay, and with that, we are, we are going to convene in closed session. Is there an expectation? We'll have anything to report out?
No, there won't be any report.
Yeah, we won't have anything to report out.